Garden Club for the flower arrangement they presented for this evening's meeting. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Mayor Franzella.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Okay, and Councilmember Ibarra called and indicated that he would be at this evening's meeting, but he will be running a few minutes late. If we could ask Chief Telford to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all.
We have a few announcements this evening. The 13th Annual Coats for Kids Program is collecting clean, gently-used coats for distribution at the Volunteer Fireman's Hall, which is at 618 San Mateo Avenue, on Thursday, November 19th, next week, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you need more information, you can get that on the city website. It's a great program, and it's a great way to use those coats that you've either outgrown or kids have outgrown and are still in real good shape. It's a real big program each year and very successful. There's a special meeting for the purpose of installing newly-elected city officials here in these chambers on Tuesday, December 1st, at 7:00 p.m. And there will not be a second meeting per city ordinance in December. December, the city council only meets on the second Tuesday of the month, not the fourth. Presentations, there aren't none this evening. Review of agenda, I have no items to be changed. Hearing, none from the council. Move on to the approval of the minutes of the special council member, council meeting of September 28th, 2009, and a regular city council meeting of October 27th. There's no changes. The minutes will stand approved as submitted. Hearing, none. The minutes will stand approved. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier. Council action may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested by councilmember, citizen, or staff. Any items to be pulled? Action from council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, in discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted in mail. Hold public hearing, waive reading, and adopt ordinance extending temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana collectives. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. As you know, on October 13th, the city enacted a moratorium on medical marijuana-
Excuse me, just one minute. Your microphone isn't operating correctly.
Okay, good.
Much better.
Thank you. As you know, the city council on October 13th enacted a medical marijuana moratorium on collectives. And I want to be clear that that related to collectives only and did not, as you know, affect individual users and the laws that pertain to the use of medicinal marijuana in one's home, either possession or cultivation or use for those particular purposes. The moratorium by government law could only be enacted for a timeframe of, a maximum timeframe, of 45 days. And so that moratorium is going to expire on November 27th by its own terms. What the government code requires is that at least 10 days prior to the expiration of that moratorium, that city staff, or that the city council, rather, adopt a report. And that is in part the purpose of the report this evening. The report had to occur this evening in order to make that 10-day limitation. So, by the government code, what is required that staff do in the interim is to report back to you on the measures that are taken, if any, to alleviate the conditions that led to the moratorium in the first place. And what I'd like to be clear about is that there really isn't anything significant that I feel that I can add to my report this evening that wasn't already provided to you on October 13th. And that is because the primary issues are really legal. Now, there is in your report, a report from the police chief, if you would like to hear more from him this evening, but I think I can summarize his report this way. And that is that the police chief is unconvinced that regulations could adequately address the negative impacts associated with collectives. I think that was his opinion on October 13th, and his report indicates that his opinion has not changed since then. I do think that there is a value in continuing to study different cities that have enacted moratoriums, excuse me, have enacted regulations overseeing collectives, and to analyze whether there are any, whether there is any valuable information to be gleaned in the particular manner that they've regulated them that might inform the city council as to how it wants to proceed. But overall, my recommendation is really the same as it was on October 13th, and that is to recommend to the city council a continuation of the moratorium. And the reason for that is because the legal landscape has not changed whatsoever in that time. There isn't really much for me to add. There are no new cases. The issue comes down to this. Does the city council wish to allow but regulate collectives, or does it wish to enact a ban? And in presenting to you the full panoply of options, at this time, I cannot recommend to you a permanent ban because it is not clear that that is a legally viable option for you. There is litigation underway that may answer that question for you, but it will not occur, it will not come to a conclusion anytime soon. And therefore, that is the basis of my recommendation to you. However, if you know already that that is not the direction that you want to go, that you don't want to enact a permanent ban, then there are a number of different options that the city council could consider in terms of regulating collectives. There are a number of different approaches that cities have taken. Now, we talked about that a little bit last time, but I regret that I did not engage you in a fuller discussion of those options. Because one of the things you asked me to do was to come back with an alternative, and that was a proposed ordinance that would allow the city to allow but regulate collectives. Now, I did draft up an ordinance that is based on the San Mateo model, but in drafting that ordinance, it made me realize that I didn't feel that I had the council's collective direction on exactly which option you would prefer. So I wanted to spend a few minutes just reviewing those with you. They are in your packet. One is, one city has used the approach of saying that medical marijuana collectives are allowed, but only by state-licensed facilities that are facilitating the care of elderly or sick patients. That is how Colma has approached it. A second option is to approach it by zoning, limiting where medical marijuana collectives could be located within the city. And that is the approach that South San Francisco, our neighbor, has used, although it is my understanding that they are now currently reconsidering whether that is the approach that they actually want to use or not. A third option is to say that collectives may be allowed, may be, in a sense, self-regulated by a board that the city appoints, made up of persons who are operating collectives within the city. And that is the approach that Berkeley has used. So they've used a very liberal approach, saying, yes, they can exist, they'll be overseen by a board made up of people who are engaged in operating those facilities, but they'll only allow three within the city. And then the last option is that which has been adopted by both the city of San Mateo and the county of San Mateo, in which there's no limitation by zoning, per se. It's treated like any other business, but a conditional use permit is required. So those are the, those are the primary approaches that the city council might wish to further consider. And there would be two ways, I see, that we could look at that. One is that the city council, if it would like more information on any or all of those approaches, could convene a study session to obtain more information about these approaches. Or if you feel prepared this evening to provide me guidance and direction, then I'm prepared to move an ordinance to the planning commission as soon as possible, and would suggest that you enact a shorter moratorium while that process occurs. So that completes my report, and I'd like to see if you have any questions for me this evening.
Questions of staff?
Just several, but to start out with. If we enact the longest moratorium that we can, the 22 months and so many days, does that preclude us from sometime in the middle there or any time in between taking action? Or do we have to wait till the end?
No, it does not preclude you from coming back at an earlier time. You would simply rescind that ordinance or repeal that ordinance and then enact a new one. There would be a 30-day period while, you have to adopt, I'll just say, it's a 30-day period in order to repeal an ordinance. So that's the timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that'd like to address us, I just need you to go to the podium and give us your name and street name for the record.
Richard Silva. I live in Pacifica. I got a call this morning from the reporter, and he's pretty, you know, valid on that. You've all made your decisions, and that's fine. Whatever you need to do to educate further, it's fine. But I brought some folks along with me tonight. I have Suresh here in the front. He's our financial backer, 100 percent legitimate real estate man, owns several businesses in San Bruno. We're not drug dealers that have piled bunches of money together and are, you know, looking to profit. My man Dave in the front there, he has a medical marijuana card, the seal of California on it. He'd pass that on to you. And, you know, I mean, the bottom line is, there are delivery services, and there's illegal services that you can't control, that you have no control over, no matter how hard you try. It's happening. There's one in Millbrae, and that's happening. There's, it's popping up everywhere. What we would provide to you is an open door of regulations. We want to work with you. The chief's report, I was fortunate enough to come across. I guess they're sent to all the chiefs in California, and they compare marijuana to opium. And, you know, I understand you make your own personal decisions, and you also have direction from your peers, but I believe that report was in October, chief, that came down?
I need you to direct-
Oh, sorry. So anyways, every chief in California is not going to be for this. That's, that's just the way it's going to be. We're not, he's not going to put himself out there that way. So, on the other side of the, on the other side of the grass there, we want to work hand-to-hand with the police. We're not disguising things. That's what we're wrong in South City, is they weren't upfront. I gave you a complete inventory of how things would work. And our whole goal is not to sell marijuana. What we would like to do is educate people so that they can grow it themselves. I mean, in a perfect world, I mean, with the healthcare issues we have, if you could grow your own medicine in your closet and be self-sustaining, why wouldn't you? So, that's where I stand. And those are my beliefs, and they won't change. And whatever your decision tonight, Ms. Thompson has my number. I'm willing to work with you folks today, tomorrow, 22 months, whatever you want to do. But I don't think you're going to get a better applicant than me and my cohorts, and that's how I feel about it. So, thank you very much for your time.
Just, excuse me, one question, and as do I. Yeah, first off, you mentioned that some reporter talked to you and told you that I had made up my mind?
Well, no, he said that it was going to be a recommended 22-month moratorium by the staff.
Oh, okay, because I haven't spoken to any reporter, so I was wondering how they knew either he or she-
You know what? I was glad he told me the answer was no, so I didn't have to wait all day to worry about it, no anticipation. So I came with a different mindset. And I understand-
And that's fine.
Yeah. But you know what? It's America, and there's opportunities everywhere, and-
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't someone speaking for me that hadn't spoke to me personally.
There's rumors all over the place.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Through the chair. So, what other, what other facilities do you operate? Do you sponsor? Where are they?
I personally have one patient, and that's all I've ever done. Like I said, this isn't my profession. I'm in the restaurant business, and this isn't Suresh's profession. He's a property manager. He owns real estates. He owns a liquor store. Dave owns his own pool company. So, you know, other than having working knowledge on how to grow and have been members of clubs and see how the business end works of it, that's where our interest comes in. And it's nice to give back. There's not, there's not going to be another collective or, none of the collectives give back the way they should, period. And we'd like to set the standard. I know that if you gave us a shot, you know, the chief wouldn't want the new squad cars coming from our collective, but under our corporation, there would be so much donations that, you know, and of course, schools and everything. I mean, we're here to give back. San Bruno, you know, it's got a lot of vacant real estate, and I just think it starts from, you know, square one. And, you know, I can guarantee to help beautify the city, definitely. I mean, we, it's fun to be creative about giving back.
So where are the closest collectives?
You have one in Millbrae, it's a delivery service. You have one in South City, that's 50/50. And it goes from San Mateo, Redwood City. I think Burlingame has a delivery service. You can actually go to weedmaps.com, and they'll direct you to your locus, the closest one.
So the reason you would want one in San Bruno is more for convenience for people, or?
No, no necessary reason why it has to be in San Bruno. It doesn't necessarily have to be in San Bruno. It's just, if there's not one there, I lived in San Bruno for eight or nine years. I know the people of San Bruno, and I know there's lots of marijuana transactions going on every single day in San Bruno. And, you know, whether the city wants to take an opportunity to drive some funds back into it, any way you can in this economy, I think should.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Any other members of the public wishing to address the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing. If we close the public hearing, you will be precluded from speaking on this item. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel discussion?
Through the chair.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Thank you. I personally don't know enough about all this, and I've never encountered anyone who's used one, and I haven't, I've read all the information we've given, but it seems to be in a state of flux as far as how to best deal with it, how to best satisfy everyone, and how to best do all this. So I would personally love to have a study session where we get all sides and learn more about it before we make any definitive decision on it.
Well, the only problem is that you have, or thing you have to consider is you have a moratorium that's expiring on the 27th of November.
You're right. What I meant to say was if we do the moratorium, or a moratorium, but any length in between the end of that moratorium and before the end of that moratorium, we have a study session to make a more definitive decision.
Okay. Any other comments from council?
Through the chair, I, just briefly, I agree. I, there's, it's too many things that, I have questions all over the place, and I'm sure this, this applicant has a lot of information and can pass on and be very, very informative at a study session, along with other, other individuals and other organizations. So I think we've done very well in getting enough information or getting enough information to make a statement, make, make a decision at, at study sessions. So I, I'm in favor of extending the ordinance, extending the moratorium.
Chair, ready?
I am also going to share as far as extending the moratorium. I know in South San Francisco, and I don't know if it's the one on Spruce that we're referring to, I know that there was some dialogue of there's something on Spruce. There was supposed to be another one going in on Utah on the 100 block. There is still a for lease sign at that property. I went by trying to look. I wanted to educate myself to understand better. Honestly, my understanding of it, and again, maybe very naive, is that it was, these type of things are to help maybe serve folks that are having cancer and trying to alleviate their pain. When I hear from the speaker, as far as educating people to grow it in your closet, and there's tons of, there's transactions going on throughout the city streets, that is not all that I have envisioned and encompass as far as the collective is concerned. So, I know in South City, they've introduced, I think, if I'm not mistaken, last month, a moratorium themselves, trying to better understand and educate themselves, even though already approving something on Utah, and now they're in discussion about that itself. So that's our neighbors to the north. I do believe that it's a difficult issue. It's not an easy one-way or another. I've had emails from folks, I've had phone calls, and it has, there's a diversity of opinion on this, on all sides. But as one person who emailed me, who I called her, she said, "Don't have a knee-jerk reaction, and just say no. Give it the thought, give it the time, give it the understanding and the concern that it deserves, and the people that it serves, or those folks that may have a second opinion on it." So for all those reasons, I think it only does us more, a better opportunity to better understand everything from the ground level up. And honestly, Mr. Silva, you've been the gentleman who spoke here and at a prior meeting, and I think it's important for us to hear from not only our residents of this community, but from other folks, and how it's either benefited or affected them one way or the
Just on the study session, I think that's a great idea, and there are a lot of unanswered questions, but I would think we'd be, the council would be best served to give staff some direction when you have a study session as to the types of questions you want answered, or the types of examples that you want. I mean, because I would predict that if you had a study session next month, the study session wouldn't be much different than the meeting you have now, except I won't be there.
[laughter]
So I think you need to lay out, when you do have a study session, what, what you're looking for, and- I don't know, are you looking for suggestions now, or just later time? I don't know if the council's prepared now, or at a later time. I mean, right now, all that's really before us is the moratorium, and do you want to extend it, and if you do. But I would suggest that at the time when you call for a study session, and you probably want to do that sooner than later. You know, there's no need to call in in the 20th month to find out that you don't have the information and the moratorium's expiring. You'd probably want to call it in three or four months, at best, but to give staff some direction as to what information you're looking for. So, that, is there any action from council?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to, I want to adopt an ordinance, so I believe, make a motion to adopt an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium to not exceed 22 months, 15 days.
Yes, we'd need a waiver of the first reading, first.
Make a motion in the first reading?
Motion to waive the first reading. Second. Motion in the second to waive the first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on establishment and operation of medical marijuana collectives to not exceed 22 months and 15 days.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
In discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moratorium is in place for 22-plus months-plus. City Attorney?
So was that a five?
That was a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine, public comment for items not on the agenda. It's the council's action to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from acting or discussing any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. And we have a speaker, name, and street name, please.
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I just want to let the city know that I've stuck my nose in probably more than once on the 5th Avenue where you're doing your trench drain for the, improving the stormwater flow, and one, the residents are happy you're doing it, and it seems to be going well, and the contractors that you ended up with seem to be conscientious and professional and doing a good job. So I think you, whether, whether it works or not, I think that the process is, is working and-
Well, we hope it works, and keep you happier than if it doesn't work.
But I mean, it looks like we're going to, we're going to learn, and I'm glad they're doing it.
Great. It's good to hear.
Thank you.
Lori Greenberg, Fleetwood Drive in San Bruno. Just a quick reminder that, to remind everyone that tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we do have a national cemetery in San Bruno, and they have a program prepared by the Avenue of Flags, 11 o'clock, so it's the 11th hour on the 11th day of the 11th month, and anybody in San Bruno, anybody in our community is welcome to participate and honor our veterans. So, thank you.
Alice Barnes, 5th Avenue, home of California's newest storm drain trench, and I just couldn't resist my brother in crime. Again, I want to thank you all so. But while I'm here, and I don't come often, I would like to say thank you to Larry Franzella. I've known you for many years up here in public service, and I have been more than impressed, and San Bruno is a better place. Thank you for your service. And for the guy next to you, 14 years ago, not you, Rico, the other one.
I knew where you were looking. I'm too young.
14 years ago, the electorate of San Bruno spoke loudly, and they chose Jim Ruane to be on the council rather than me. And that was the best choice for the community, and now that he's, well, I don't want to steal the city clerk's thunder, but I understand he's going to be the next mayor, and we've spoken very well again. So thank you both.
Thank you, Alice. That's good. Very well said. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to item 10, conduct the business. Item A, receive oral report on the results of the November 3rd general municipal election and the schedule to fill council vacancy. City clerk?
Honorable mayor and council members. San Mateo County has 28 days from the date of the election, which was November 3rd, to certify the results. So the results that I'm going to give you tonight are semi-official results, as of today, November 10th. For the office of mayor, Jim Ruane received 3,210 votes. Miguel Arahu received 1,165 votes. Council had two open seats, and both incumbents ran unopposed. Rico Medina received 3,329 votes, and Ken Ibarra received 3,158 votes. The treasurer had one open seat, and the incumbent ran unopposed. And the incumbent, John Marty, received 3,726 votes. The city clerk had one open seat, and she ran unopposed. And that's Carol Bonner, and she received 3,811 votes. And then Connie, I'd like to speak to you, our city manager.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the purpose of my short additional report is to provide you some specific information and give an opportunity of a heads-up both to the city council as well as to members of the public about the process and the timeline that applies under state law for the city council's decision-making with respect to filling a vacancy that will exist on the city council with councilmember Ruane's election to the mayor's seat. That election result will take effect as of December 1st. That is the first Tuesday that immediately follows the timeline for the city, I'm sorry, for the county to complete the final results of the election, which occurred on November 3rd. At that time, the new mayor will take his seat, and all of the newly-elected public officials will be sworn in and take their seats. At that time, with the transition of current mayor Larry Franzella off of the city council, there will be the initiation of a vacancy. Again, that- Again, the purpose of my report is not to engage you in discussion, it's premature for that to occur, but simply to provide you with a heads-up because there are some very specific procedural and scheduling issues that I think are important, both for you and for the public, to know. In short summary, in the event of a vacancy, state law requires or calls for the city council to have two options to fill that vacancy. First option is to call for a special election. In that case, the city council has 114 days to schedule that election, and there are certain requirements that apply to how that is done. The short part of this story is that, in that case, there are no immediately urgent scheduling considerations that I've been able to identify. So, I will be proceeding with the second option in which that is the case, and the majority of my comments will apply to the second option. But again, just to be absolutely clear, and as a reminder, that there are two options, and the city council has not yet been presented with the opportunity, and will not be presented with the opportunity for any decision-making until after the vacancy occurs. The second option, under state law, is for the city council to make an appointment to fill that vacancy. And in this case, there is a fairly short period of time that state law provides for that vacancy, for that decision to be completed. In other words, for an appointment to be made, and a new council member to be seated. As you can well imagine, just visualizing the calendar in your head, beginning December 1st, 30 days puts a very tight window of time right on top of typically busy holiday season. For that reason, I am recommending that the city council consider taking, I will be recommending, that the city council consider taking up this important decision at the earliest possible time, and as early actually as December 1st, on the evening in which the new council will take its seats. If the city council elects to, or decides to make an appointment, again, you have 30 days to do that, and I will be laying out a proposed schedule for your consideration that would allow the council potentially to complete that process prior to the full-on holiday season. But again, would just, as a, with my purpose as a heads-up, make it clear to the city council and to the public that this important decision will be needing to be made, if that's the council's pleasure, in a very short period of time. It has traditionally been the city council's process in the, in these previous occasions where an appointment has been made to an elective office, to provide an opportunity for citizens who are interested to participate, and it is with that in mind that I will, again, be making a recommendation to you for a schedule that begins almost immediately after December 1st, and again, concludes within the first couple of weeks of December in order to avoid the holidays. With that, I don't have any additional comments this evening, and again, my only purpose is to provide an advance organizer and heads-up, both to you and the community, because this is a, an important decision for the council and for the future of San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. Should also be reported that Measure F, the transient occupancy tax that was before the voters did, was successful and did pass in the city of San Bruno, as it did throughout the county where it was on the ballot. Item B, receive oral update on the El Camino Real median improvements project. Laura.
Actually, while the staff is preparing, I just, for the benefit of the city council, I asked for this report to be made tonight, not because there's any action to be considered, but because this is a highly visible, long-anticipated project, and it is one that, about which I've received a number of questions. And so, our interest here tonight is to provide you with a brief update, and again, for the purpose of informing the public as this exciting project moves forward to completion.
Honorable Mayor, council member, good evening. How the city manager already informed you, I will give you a short update on the status of this very highly monitored by the public and everybody, and presenting a high public interest. I will just remind you what is the scope of the project. Those highlighted medians on El Camino will be redeveloped. That's was, is the intent. Those medians should look like very close to this picture at the end of the development of the project, and also, the two monuments will be installed both at the southern entrance of this project. The notice to proceed for this project was issued in July 21st of this year. Part of the contract document, in the contract document was included 90 working days for the project. What is very specific, what is very different for this project versus other project in the city is that the work is taking place in...
Or if you feel prepared this evening to provide me...
Caltrans right-of-way, and based on a encroachment permit issued by them. Part of the encroachment permit limited the construction time between 9:00 and 3:00 PM, that really gave the contractor a very short construction window, in essence, between 9:30 and 2:30 each day. Also, based on certain limitation of that encroachment permit, the project needed to be closed down for water, weather delays, and also, based on other traffic-related issues region-wide, like the Bay Bridge repair. During that time, Caltrans revoked the issued encroachment permit. On last Friday was the 59th working day on this project, and at that time, about 65% of their working days was consumed by the contractor, and from the initial scope of the project, they basically already performed around 75% of the initial scope of the project. The challenge with this project was also that the contractor encountered certain unforeseen site condition on median one, damaged existing irrigation main line, on median four, base rock removal, on 10 and 11, underground concrete storm drain, which basically is a storm, existing storm box. On median 15, also is existing obstruction underneath the roadbed. Based on those already mentioned by me reason, the city extended the working days for this project, and right now, the expected completion time for this project is March of next year. To place this timeframe in context, I heard mentioning a few times the construction on the median for San Bruno, that was a little bit faster than how is the construction is proceed, at least is proceed going on, on this project. That construction lasted a little bit, well over five months, and certainly wasn't, the time of the construction wasn't limited, how is in this case, that basically the contractor has much narrower construction window than for that project. And also, on this project, the contractor encountered challenging site condition, which was unforeseen at the time of the issuance of the contract. If you have any question.
Any questions, the staff?
Through the chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Through, okay, so there's a delay, but there's, there's not a, there's not an increase in, in the cost of the project. I mean, there are some unforeseen prizes that were still within the contingency?
As any unforeseen condition in the field will have a financial impact. It is right now, based on already agreed-on change order and changes in, for the project, those contingencies covered the cost of the project, but the late, some of those items are still under negotiation, and that will go over the approved budget for this project. And this is my expectation at this time, that the department will be back in probably not the next council meeting, but the following council meeting, to ask for additional budget appropriation for the project.
I'm just a little, I'm a little confused. I, you showed a slide that represented, as of last Friday, 64% of the workdays, and then the next statement used, I'm not clear on what that represented, a 74% construction time, or construction completion. Is that, am I correct?
You are correct, and I didn't clarify it well enough, and that's why I was a little bit confusing the information. The 64% and the 70, the 65 and the 74% represent the initial time and the initial scope of the project. That really show that if would not have been any unforeseen condition on this project, then the contractor would have been a little bit even ahead of schedule. But due to those unforeseen condition in the field, that had a negative impact on the schedule and also on the budget of the project.
So, so where, what is the percentage of completion right now?
I don't have...
Based on a March completion date now?
I will have to follow up with a specific percentage for you, and I will send you an email with those percentages.
Through the chair, and I know you keep saying these unforeseen circumstances, what are these unforeseen items that we're referring to? Or if that, you don't have all that, are you talking about the weather condition, you're talking about the Bay Bridge closure, but you said there was something else, and that's what I'm not hearing as to what, unless I've missed that?
Those unforeseen condition, site conditions are the base rock in the sub-bays, and also, those concrete storm drain boxes in median 10 and 11.
And so, what, how much of the contingency has this taken up?
Right now, it's very close that the, is, almost already, the cost is very close to contingency for this project.
What is your estimate, or maybe it's too early to, I know you're going to come back?
Yes.
I noticed you're going to do it when Mr. Franzella's off, so I don't know if you're doing that just to make it easier on him, or not. But, but what are we, what's the, what's the thought of the overage that this is going to cause because of these unforeseen site conditions in addition to the other items that you mentioned?
I certainly, I don't want to guess.
Okay, no, let's not do that.
But it's my intent to come back. Those change orders, one change order, and those unaddressed issues are under negotiation with the contractor, and that's why the contractor came back with two alternatives, and what, which alternative of those two will be accepted by the city will have an impact on the final cost, and that's why I cannot share that with you.
Just to point out a little bit clearer, I mean, many people understand, but like on median 15, where it says the obstruction of underneath El Camino Real roadway bed, those median planter boxes were just built on top of the road. It's amazing that those trees got to some 20 feet tall with about two feet of soil. That's why you saw the edging of the median strips bulging out and the concrete moving, because it couldn't penetrate the El Camino roadway bed. So, the bed has been opened, so now, new plantings will actually be able to go all the way down through the ground. It's amazing that those trees got to look, got to be as big as they are, and it's no wonder why they never looked all that great. There was really not much dirt there, there was a lot of root, so...
And my last comment is that my concern is, and I understand that there's these unforeseen things, and you can't thoroughly survey what they're going to, what they're going to come up with, or what they're going to contend with, but I don't, I'm very concerned that if you're saying right now that we've almost exhausted all of the contingency, that your next report is going to say that we're going to be in, you know, a large percentage over budget, and, and how does that, you know, how does that affect the project? I don't want to think, I don't want to assume that this council is going to, you know, to say, "Okay, it's unforeseen, so I guess we have to approve it." There's going to have to be some real, you know, soul-searching on how to really, you know, complete this project if it, you know, if the cost gets out of hand.
Council member, I bear, I am not expecting the cost to be much over, yes, you say will be over on, but I don't think will be too excessive over on at this time, based on what I know today. And I, I think the department now have a very good understanding what is the existing condition in the field. And certainly, this was a, the department will make sure that Phase Two, the lesson learned from this site condition on Phase One will be incorporated in Phase Two design to make sure that these conditions will be assessed during the design phase for Phase Two.
Okay, any other questions, comments from council? Okay, item C, adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute memorandum of understanding between the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board and the city of San Bruno for the San Bruno grade separation project. Staff?
My recommendation, my recommendation tonight for your consideration is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute the memorandum of understanding between the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board and the city of San Bruno. The history of this MOU and the project, the recent history, I will not go back years in the history of the project, knowing that you had before you this item was in, in August, Caltrans made a presentation for the project kickoff. On September, this item was also before you, and you approved ACIP project for, for the grade separation project, and you allocated funding for staff support and consultant support to work in the development of this project. In September, also, this item was before you to give direction to staff... In September, also this item was before you to give direction to staff on basic structural design element of this project. The purpose of the MOU, what you have before you tonight, is in essence to memorialize the party's joint commitment to cooperate for the development of this project and to pursue the design and construction. And also the intent of the MOU to specify the duties and responsibilities of both parties as this project continues to develop. In essence, the purpose of this MOU to establish a policy framework, how the development of this project will happen in, during the design phase and during the construction phase. What this MOU is not intended to do to specify all of the design elements of, and agreement on all of the design elements of this project. I will take you through a few, I will highlight, highlight just a few items of interest from the MOU. What the city agrees to entering in this MOU, to, the city will agree to the main structural elements of design was included in the sixty-five percent project, design. JPB also acknowledged several unresolved scope issues in this sixty-five, sixty-five percent design, including architectural feature at Posi Park, architectural design of the new station, the aesthetics and surface treatment of the retaining wall system, utility relocations, and less, and landscaping will be resolved as part of the final design. It is explicitly understood that the project shall include all agreed on design elements by the SAS, if technically feasible. JPB acknowledged that the city desired to limit construction of the San Bruno grade separation to one continuous period of construction. But that really mean that, as, as you remember from the reason why I am expanding a little bit on this point, that based on some comments what I received during the last few days, as you recall from the project sequence presentation, this project is intended to be developed in two construction phases based on two different construction contract, and will be a decision point what JPB will have to make for, for the second phase of this project, depending on the decision on the high-speed rail. And this is a statement that the city is interested in on-time construction, that basically finishing the project for four tracks instead of finishing for two tracks and coming back later for, for the next two tracks. JPB and the city commit to conclude discussion of unresolved issues in a timely manner. JPB will seek city's review of the design and will incorporate those comments by, by the city into the final design that if they are feasible. JPB will keep city informed of progress of construction and will coordinate public outreach with the city. They will designate a point of contact and the city will do the same. JPB and city shall develop a process to allow city to monitor any change, changes to the element of specific interest to the city, provided that JPB shall not be constrained in meeting its construction schedule and avoiding contract claims. The city and JPB shall enter in a construction and maintenance agreement, which is not available at this time yet. These are only just highlights what, of this MOU of more interest to the city, but they are not intended to encompass all of the issues included in the MOU. My recommendation tonight is for you to consider to authorize the city manager to finalize and to enter in this MOU what is before you. If you have any question.
Questions of staff at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
City manager.
May I make a few additional comments? I just wanted to elaborate and to reemphasize a couple of things that the director indicated in her report, and to acknowledge the fact that there have been some number of comments and questions from the public as this item has moved forward for your consideration tonight. First and foremost, I want to emphasize that the, this is a project that has come onto an accelerated schedule. City council is aware of that. And it represents a long expected and anticipated delivery of, of interest to the community. The JPB has, on a regular and continuous basis, provided a very collaborative, very cooperative, and very proactive relationship with staff in working through a myriad of design details. We fully expect that both the need for that type of work and the cooperative spirit and fact that has guided that work to date, we have every expectation that that will continue through the complete design and development of this project. With that said, I, and without disregarding, fully acknowledging that, again, there are many issues that are not nailed down at this time, but they are also not specifically articulated in this MOU. And for clarification purposes, and just to reemphasize something that the director said, it is not the purpose or our expectation, nor should it be your expectation, that an MOU of this general nature, which is intended to situate the relationship between the parties and to clarify the intent on a going-forward basis, as has been the case for a cooperative working relationship, that the purpose of this MOU is, is, is not to provide response or certainty on most, if, if not any of the design details that will be worked as this process moves forward. That said, you, you, there are some wording changes to the MOU at, as, as it has been included in the packet, that are recommended for wordsmithing, if you will. And so you have essentially a couple of options tonight if the council is in agreement with the basic concept and content of the MOU. And that is, as the director is recommending, to allow me to finalize those wording changes that do, would not, and are not expected to change the basic content of the agreement, or to ask for that to come back to the city council at a subsequent meeting. I think the director's recommendation is clear, and I just wanted to make sure that the council is, is fully informed, that this document does not deliberately overlook that there are numerous interests and items of, on a day-by-day basis, to resolve and to troubleshoot and to make sure that this project is what we expect as it moves forward to completion.
Through the chair. Councilwoman Ibarra?
I appreciate that statement, but I'm still concerned because there's two statements in this draft MOU that seem to contradict each other. And that's during this, in the description of the scope of the project, and very simply states that the details of the project are more specifically described in the JPB's sixty-five percent design drawings dated August 28, 2009. And then it goes two paragraphs later that the JPB acknowledges that there are several unresolved scope issues in the sixty-five percent, you know. So one, you're saying you've got specific details of the project, and then not, and then another statement was, you know, we're, we're, we're expected to accept that there's still unresolved issues. So I think we're going to get in a bind if, you know, if we start using now, you know, those statements. I, I don't like to hear the details of the, of more, you know, I don't like words that, like specific, you know? And then several unresolved, I mean, there just seems to be a contradiction there. And I'm, I'm fine with the whole MOU and the whole relationship and, you know, and that, that setup and everything. But I know that there's a lot of concerns, not only with my colleague on the subcommittee, but also with the former members of the CAC and the greater community, that there are details that we are still undoubtedly probably going to have to argue and, and fight for.
Councilmember Ibarra, based how the city manager already mentioned, that certainly this is still said draft MOU is open to some final words changes. Based on those concerns, what I heard from the community and what the city manager heard from the community, even today on page three, there were three other changes made to this draft to further address those concerns. And even your, your quote, quote on page three, it said, to accept the sixty-five percent design specifically says now in this latest version incorporating the structural element of the sixty-five design. That basically this MOU clearly emphasized the fact that what the city really accept the major structural element of that sixty-five percent design. And certainly no sixty-five percent design can provide all of the details, and that's why further the MOU at least intends to clarify that there are many, many elements which are still part of the final design phase, and those will be clarified and in collaboration with JPB, those will be addressed. How they are listed, those architectural issue, wall design, wall treatment, the Posi Park and utility relocation, there are still many outstanding issues on this project which were not agreed to or at this stage, based on the very fast space, pace, how the development of this design is taking place right now. Yeah.
Any other comments, members of public?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I gave the council and Mark Simon a copy of, of some of my concerns, but I'm just going to touch on two because I don't want to nitpick. What, what part of the, will the original CAC play to assure that their original recommendations are met? They talk about, they, the original CAC recommendations will be considered, but is there any community input to, from that group going forward, or whatever they have turned in is where it is, and there, will there be any, any follow-through? My, my bigger question is, and I think Clara showed in, in one of the slides, the, the JPB and the city agree that certain design elements, as presented by the CAC, will be included if technically feasible. But there's a second reference in the staff package that says technically feasible or financially feasible. And I think when they put that financially feasible in there, one of the scenarios is the JPB is going to come back and say, we've only got so much money, it is technically feasible to do this, but the city of San Bruno cannot say, you've got to spend your money on this. The JPB is going to say, we would love to do this, but there's not the money. So I'm, I'm just concerned that that's going to be used as a scapegoat and say, the recommendations, whatever they are, how the water is pumped from the depressions of San, of Sematelo Avenue or San Bruno Avenue or Angus back into the storm drain systems, there, there's not money to, to do it the way maybe that it should be done, or, or the CAC suggested it be done. I, I guess I would like some clarification maybe from JPB on, are they going to, how are they going to weigh technically feasible and financially feasible when they make these kinds of decisions?
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to address the council on this issue?
Good evening. I'm Mark Simon, executive officer for Public Affairs for Caltrain. First of all, let me just congratulate Mr. Wayne and congratulate Larry Franzella on a remarkable turn. Thank you for all of your service. And Jim, thank you for all the service you're going to provide. The Caltrain staff concurs with the recommendation of the city staff and urges the board to, the council, excuse me, I speak before boards all the time, urges the council to approve the resolution as it's described by your staff. We have been working, and we appreciate city manager Jackson's description of our relationship. We subscribe entirely to her characterization. We work very, very hard, to work very, very fast. Mr. Ibarra, I think it's significant, this is for sixty-five percent design, there's still, I don't think it was ever intended to be something you would bring to you at a hundred percent design. I think that would be inappropriate to bring you essentially a done deal. Most of the things that we have to work out are not dissimilar from issues we've already worked out, sometimes on very short timeframe. As Ms. Frabry described, there was one we, we resolved today, and it is in our interest to resolve these issues as quickly as possible, as we're currently spending a million dollars a week on this project. Public taxpayers' money, I know the city staff is also spending significant resources. The word scope always throws me off because it sounds in our mind, I think it's, I don't think it's bigger in that sense. I think we're talking about things like, we, first of all, we've already agreed to a water feature, we've already agreed to the elevators, I know those were two issues that were of significant importance to the council. But we're talking about in some cases aesthetics, some cases sort of the practical considerations of how you move utilities and how you move water pipes. We're confident all this can be resolved, and we urge the council to approve this resolution. Thanks.
Before you, could I get you to just maybe address Mr. Rico's question on how you're going to weigh technically feasible versus financially feasible and, and the role you see in the CAC?
Well, he's correct. I mean, one of the issues it is of issue, and it came up the last time I appeared for this council, when there was a proposal to really significantly change the design, the cost of the project is an issue for us. It is not a small issue, and, and we only have a certain amount of money, so there's no question that will be one of the factors. And whether it's technically feasible is one of the issues that we continue to address with the city staff, and there are times when they'll convince us that something is more feasible than we thought it was. These are all things that are subject to negotiation. As for the role of the CAC, I really think that's up to the council and staff to decide. Certainly, there's no question that the CAC had extensive, almost unprecedented participation in this experience and this design from the outset. We have adopted virtually all of their recommendations, and I believe it's really the responsibility of the city staff and the council to make sure that these things are followed through on. In my experience appearing for, for this council is, you don't need me to tell you what those responsibilities are, you're very mindful of them, and you've been very aware of the need to fulfill them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alice Barnes, Fifth Avenue, honorable mayor, council members. Boy, did you just hear him say, quote, "Our best interest." And he did mean the Joint Powers Board Caltrain. He did not mean the city council's best interest or San Bruno's. And he also made a misstatement in when he said that the recommendations that were made by the CAC have been incorporated in the sixty-five percent. I sent you folks a letter last night with thirteen points where they are not living up to the CAC. I'll give you one real quick example here. We wanted seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long platforms on First Avenue that's going to stick out atop a twenty-foot wall at the curb for four tracks. It's going to stick out over First Avenue, ten feet. And suddenly, in this sixty-five percent, they have added a future possibility of two-hundred-and-fifty more feet. That means every house except one on First Avenue from pine north will be looking across the, may look across the street at a twenty-foot wall with a ten-foot overhand. Now, I brought that to the city's attention and they went back and they were told it's an error. Did you get any guarantee or warm and fuzzy feeling from the previous speaker that they're going to put that in writing, that that's an error and you will never see those two-hundred-and-fifty feet? No. And a lot of these unresolved issues are not being put in writing. And if we sign this MOU based on a seriously flawed project design, we will be buying into it and we won't have a say in inspections or wall or landscaping. I truly believe they will be collaborative like our city manager said. I believe that we're going to negotiate like Mark Simon said. Did you just hear how many trees we're going to have on First Avenue? There's not a damn tree from Angus south on First Avenue. And the reason is, I, I better quit, but I do-
Don't leave us hanging without the reason.
I'm sorry? I did hear you. The, the, the problem with the plan is we on the CAC were going for a four-track footprint. And then they came back to us years ago and said, "We're going to do two tracks." Now, their back is up against the wall and they need that ten million dollars. So, we're being rushed. And what the engineers have done in the project design is they've put a two-track in with all kinds of accoutrements that are over on that other side, the First Avenue side. And they're telling us we're going to have a Phase Two for four tracks. Well, to go from two to four tracks, they will have to demolish millions of dollars of enhancements, as structural, at whatever. They will have to demolish that and then build a four-track. Folks, they, if they lose the ten million dollars, I'm sorry, but you taxpayers and I taxpayer are going to save more than ten million dollars in not doing these things and not tearing them down. I'm sorry, but I am adamantly opposed to this and I respectfully ask you to at least postpone approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue? Council discussion?
I'd like a few comments.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Thank you. I think first of all, after the last comments, I think we need some clarification on exactly what is happening because my understanding is it's going to be a, one complete construction phase and that after everything is built, there will be room to add two more tracks. My understanding is not that they are going to build something with two tracks and then come back, tear things down and add a second set of tracks. So, could we please clarify that by whoever wants to?
Go ahead.
My name is Robert O'Callaghan, I'm the project manager with JPB. So, in answer to your question, Ms. Councilmember, we are building two tracks in one construction project and then the second two tracks would be contemplated in our second construction project.
Okay, before you, wait a second. Before you, before you continue, is the platform itself, the structure itself wide enough, the, the structure that you're going to build initially, wide enough to accommodate four tracks?
At no point will we build a platform that's two tracks that will be demolished, if that's your question. And the reason I answered that way-
That really wasn't my question, but that's an answer to a question.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm trying to answer the question. The question is, we will build two tracks, okay? We will have an option, which will be to complete a two-track wide station, or we will issue a second contract, which is for building the remaining two tracks. So, one or the other will occur in 2012.
I'm sorry, you've confused me even more.
And I don't think your question was answered, Jim.
Yeah, let, let me add, the idea here is that by the time we're in the position where we have to make this decision, we will know whether high-speed rail is coming or not. If it doesn't come, then we shouldn't build four tracks. We don't know yet. We don't have the money. We'd rather, if we're going to build the second set of tracks, that high-speed rail pay for it, not us. So, we're designing a two-track structure that can be expanded to four tracks, but it will not at the, the outset be a four-track structure.
So, so with, with expanding it, let me just take it, so you build half of it and you're going to build the other two and you come and just put it right next to it and now you've got four?
That's, that's the essential engineering premise, yes. We're not, we're not going to tear down a whole bunch of other stuff. That's the idea, is to build it so that it can accommodate four tracks.
Okay, then, may I continue?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, what's funny is the speaker's over here, so I keep looking over.
The camera's picking you up, don't worry about it. So, therefore, I've been looking at the design, the sixty-five percent design documents. And for anyone who hasn't seen them, there, it's a pile of documents this thick and this big. And the print on it is, is small, it's not a twelve, it has to be a ten font. It's small. So, it takes a while to, to dig it all out and try to figure out what's going on. So, I, first of all, I applaud the committee, the CAC group that did a lot of this work. And Alice, I know you've, and Robert, you've done a lot of the work of trying to look at these plans and figuring out exactly what it means. I think the, the concerns are what Ms. Barnes said they were. We don't want anyone coming through our town doing a huge construction project, two tracks, four tracks, whatever, and then coming back later and tearing part of it apart and adding more to it. So, that, that's a concern and we'd like to hear from, from you emphatically that that is not going to happen.
That is not going to happen.
Okay, so that, make sure that's on the public record. Secondly, I understand the sixty-five percent planning. I understand that you can and cannot do certain things right now because there's other decisions that are being made. I'm, I'm a new member of the High-Speed Rail Policy Committee. There's all things happening with that. And I understand that there's steps that you can't step on each other's toes and, and there's phases to do. Okay? However, my, one of my big concerns, besides the fact that I'm deeply concerned about how the storm drain water is going to be moved back and forth, my parents live right down there. I also want to know that any engineering decisions that are being made now and up to the hundred percent will not preclude any aesthetics that were promised and landscaping that was promised for First Avenue on the east side. And part of how I read the plans is there's a lot of wonderful-looking things on the west side of the tracks and the stations. There's the fountains and the this and the that. But I've noticed that there's nothing much printed on the east side. And also, it doesn't look like there was any consideration, and I could be wrong because I haven't been studying the plans all that long, any consideration to moving, shifting the whole thing over five feet and allowing for the landscaping on the east side of First Avenue. And I know when I say that, it sounds really simple to do, but I, I realize it isn't. But I'd like some assurance from you that the considerations will be made to keep First Avenue as whole as possible. Those people live, their front, their front room is here, the tracks are there and they have traffic in front of them. It's, it's a very difficult place to live and they, they have no, it'd be difficult to sell your house, it'd be difficult to move somewhere else. So, those are kinds of the things I'm looking for.
Okay, well, let me answer the question about the five feet first because that one's an easy one for me. We did look at that early on. It is not technically viable to get all four tracks by shifting everything to the west. But we did look at all possible alternatives to shifting it, so that wasn't viable. In regards to planting or to any kind of treatment along First Avenue, that's actually one of the issues that we're working very closely with the city right now on. The city has specifically brought up that issue as being one of the items they're interested in, is possibly incorporating some trees or some other kind of planting along there. It's specifically excluded in the MOU, not because this is something we're not agreeing with the city on, rather it's because at sixty-five, we didn't want to present a Fez A Compli, this is what we're going to do, you know, love it or leave it, quite the opposite. We're working with the city. You've obtained a consultant, we're working with that consultant and with the staff to develop exactly what that's going to look like. So, we're, we're well aware that that's a concern the city has and that's something that we're, we're going to take into account to the ninety-five percent.
I understand all those things and it's, it's hard to reconcile what you just said to some of the plans that I saw that show a three-dimensional drawing of the trash can that's going to go on the station. So, I'll, I'll take your answer for what it is, but I, I really hope that you don't come back and, and tell us that there's not going to be landscaping on the First Avenue.
I understand your concerns. Don't confuse a rendering with a final design.
Okay.
You know, there, there's a lot to be done still, that's the whole point of this MOU. It's really a structure for us to go forward. It, it's, it's no different than the decision you made, I think it was back August 29th, according to the slide. This is essentially memorializing that decision. We've already made some significant strides since then to get the sixty-five percent. And it's our, it's in our interest. I, I'm assuming that it's okay for us to have an interest as well, but I think in this case, it's our, an interest we share with you, which is to get this done, to get it done in a way that's meaningful and appropriate for the city and for us. And that's our intent. And that's why there's still issues to be resolved. Based on our, our history so far, we're very confident these are going to be resolved and that we're not going to win them all either, to be honest with you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. In, in general, the MOU is, is fine. I understand completely that you don't have all the answers now. But I guess a lot of this has, for me, to do with a matter of trust. And you came to us a number of years ago and we talked to you about deaths occurring at that, at that site. What are we going to do? And I think you were actually, based on prior experience with this, prior councils, you were actually very happy that we were willing to work with you. And we started the CAC process, long, laborious, hard, fun process. And I have to congratulate Robert and Alice for being a very, a part of that whole operation. And we came together and worked with you and developed what we thought was going to be a real first-class, you know, process. And, and that now we have high-speed rail thrown into the mix. I understand completely that you don't have the answers to fill in the blanks at this point in time. But I think a lot of it has to do with trust. And given the fact that if you wanted a number of years ago, you could have said, "We're coming through, see you later, it's concrete and this is what you have." So, given the fact that you were, you were coming here a number of times asking for our advice, asking for us to get on board, if you will, and trying to make this happen in a cooperative way, I do in fact think it'll all work out. I don't think we're going to get every little tiny thing that we would want on the wish list, but we have assurances in elevators, we have assurances on a lot of the things that were sort of in question even just a few months ago. So, I just want to bring that up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know that was a similar concern expressed by council member Medina the last time I was here. And it is an issue of trust and, and it works both ways. We're trusting that we can work these issues out in a way that allows this project to go forward in a timely way. The thing that we're very nervous about is the same tight timeframe that's troubling to everybody. So, we're taking it on trust that, that there isn't going to be a month of delay in, in finalizing this agreement, that it's going to be done in a timely way. There's no reason to doubt that that's not going to be the case. There's no reason to doubt that won't be the case. I was right.
Right, well, some of the real issues, you know, and, and they've talked about this drainage issue. We used to have a lot of flooding downtown and, and on the east side of town. And there's some real issues of, of how this water's going to get from one side to the other.
Absolutely.
And I want to make sure that that's addressed properly because you're going to dig a big hole once and we don't have to do any more of it.
Senator Madam?
If I can just, since it really relates to the last two colleagues speaking, and what really, I think what concerns us all is that we did place within this MOU a specific language about maintaining the elevator, maintaining the fountains and things. I think we needed to go a little step further because we have members of the public that were part of the CAC that, you know, that know that we have major discussions on treatments on the east side, on First, along First Avenue. And knowing, obviously, if that's not part of the sixty-five, neither are elevators or fountains. So, quite possibly, and I'm probably directing this to staff also, maybe we need to put, you know, we need to go over some of that stuff from the PSR and, you know, and, and see what may, you know, to at least pacify us that these things will not be lost in the final design, that they go within the MOU along with, you know, the drainage issues. So, I mean, I think you hadn't, we had no problem placing the elevator issue or the fountains issue or anything within this MOU, even though they're well past sixty-five percent. But I think we need to also address some of the other treatments that we worked very hard to address along with the JPB.
I think that's our intent. I think that's the intention going forward from the MOU.
But they're memorialized in this document.
Well, they, I think they were issues that were raised because the council made a specific issue of those things. You know, what you're telling me is we, we put them in, we didn't have to. I think that's a demonstration of our intent on going forward in a cooperative, collaborative way.
Through the chair. I'm just, obviously, there are changes have been made, there are questions that have been raised, there's things that should be placed in the MOU. Trust is an important thing, but there's a, obviously, a former president said, "Trust but verify." Why would we not want to postpone the MOU for two weeks to allow some of the modifications and updates to it so that it's all presented before us in its entirety rather than going forward with some of the changes that already have occurred that I guess we're not seeing here? I'm trying to understand what would be the benefit for the council and the community to go forward this night or what will it do to us if we have to come back on November 24th with all, as you call it, the changes, the word changes, et cetera? I'm looking for an answer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. From, well, I, I was just going to say, I've already given you the option of either that or doing it tonight. I think your question is more properly directed to the JPB. I mean, there, that's-
I think the city managers yield the floor to you.
So it appears, yes. We're just worried about, about the timeframe. Two more weeks and then is it going to be two more weeks after that? And at what point does it get to the point where we can't do this? One of the elements of our discussion prior to tonight's resolution was a commitment from the city that this was not going to take a couple of more- from the city that this was not going to take a couple of more weeks. We're spending a million dollars a week. If we're not going to get these things done and done quickly, then we have to ask, and I hate to say this, because I don't want to put the council, you know, I don't want to seem like I'm putting the council in this kind of a position, but it's the position we're in, that if we don't move forward on this, then there's some question about whether or not we can get this done in a way that meets the deadlines we have and that meets the requirements that we need to meet.
And I appreciate what you've said. So if the council were to give you, or I gave you my word and say, trust us, that in two weeks, when you came back, that we would feel that everything would be fine to approve, is that timeframe of the two weeks is still of a considerable challenge and a problem for the current project?
It's a concern. I mean, we're talking, we're trying, we're talking to the city about days, not weeks, to try and get this MOU resolved and the remaining issues that we have to get to get this thing signed, resolved. That leaves still other issues that we will continue to work on. But it is troubling to us that we're not able to get moving on this, and we've been working very hard already on it.
Excuse me. Through the chair.
Yes, Irene.
Thank you. I understand the point of the two more weeks, but they've made very public statements, and we have it on record, and I know we'll have it in the minutes, that they're asking us to trust them, they're asking us to work with them. We've had people listening very closely, all the councils listening. We can, and if I'm understanding right, we can add things tonight to change this, if we need to, or we can add a line saying, including the considerations that were voiced tonight, or let that be part of the minutes and just move on. I don't, I didn't make my comments with the intention of delaying things. I only made my comments to make public and to assure people that you are working with us, we're working with you, and that those things weren't swept under the rug and forgotten. It's a very small part of our town, I realize that, but they are part of our town, and they've carried the blunt of a lot of construction through Barton, other things that, that part needed to be considered. So I understand all the things both of you have said, but I don't know if that's necessary to delay for two weeks.
Through the chair. I agree with Councilwoman O'Connell. Two weeks is going to bring up more questions, more, I mean, if you're working internally with staff on a daily basis for some of the very issues we've talked about tonight, I really don't have a problem.
I was just going to mention that, or say that, I think staff has a real good idea of what the CAC wants, what has been done, what the concerns are, and the reports that have come back aren't surprising that the JPB has been very cooperative and working diligently to get things done. And yes, I understand that you have an interest, and so I know that you understand that we also have an interest, and you're going to have to hit some kind of medium ground. Everyone's not going to get everything that they want, but I think it is a real time constraint that's been placed on them because of the funding that's there. And I don't think that we have any problem, or at least I don't have any problem, given the city manager authority to enter into the MOU, making those necessary changes. And if she can't get those changes made, then we'll see in two weeks. Okay? I mean, and if you don't want to be here in two weeks, work a little bit later and get her more satisfied and get a signature quicker is kind of what it amounts to. And I can understand not wanting to stretch that out, because it just kind of stretches it out, and it's at a million dollars a week, not anything anyone wants to spend, so.
Through the chair.
Councilmember Medina.
I can appreciate what is being said, maybe that's why you're the mayor, of course. I understand your situation, but we have our situation. We're not going to get everything we want, and it's going to work both ways, and we understand that. We spoke before, and obviously, actions speak louder than words. I can go along with what the mayor is saying, is that we could enter into the agreement with those changes and modifications made to the MOU by the manager, and if it doesn't meet the expectations and what you've heard here this evening, then I would agree. You're back in two weeks. And I think then the trust factor will really be tested on both sides.
I understand what you're saying. You know, I want to echo again my appreciation for what your city manager said about working with us. We feel the same way, and there's an extra element you should know of, they are very, very good at representing your interests. Very good.
And I don't want to downplay that I don't believe...
Right.
Exactly what staff has said about the cooperation and the communication and the diligence of what they have been doing. So I don't want to downplay that with yourself and with the staff.
I understand. I don't think we interpret it that way.
Okay. Is there action from council to introduce the resolution with the, giving the manager authorization to execute with those changes?
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce that resolution for adoption.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Hopefully, we don't see you next week and, or in two weeks. Item D, receive report and recommendation from the Park and Recreation Commission regarding improvements to the Catalpa Tot Lot. Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
No trains.
No trains.
No trains.
Approximately five years ago, the last pieces of playground equipment...
Excuse me, Randy?
Randy, Chair Nixie is right, right now.
Looks like you added something to the lot.
No trains, but one chair. And we will turn that chair into a bench eventually. Approximately five years ago, the last piece of playground equipment were removed from Catalpa Park due to the fact that they no longer met the national playground safety standards. During the consideration of immediately reinstalling equipment, a USA survey revealed a thirty-inch gas line. PG&E regulations prohibit the installation of any hard surface, including playground equipment, directly on the gas line, over the gas line, or within five feet of the gas line on either side. And the blue line here depicts the area of the gas line plus the five-foot sections on either side. Two years ago, the commission held public discussions regarding improvements to the property, and upon hearing, a discrepancy of opinions from the residents in the area, the commission recommended no action at that time. Last year, the commission continued discussions of the site, and then in June and July of this year, held public meetings, invited the public to come, and after hearing from over a dozen speakers and considering multiple options for the site, both for the vacant lot and for this, the basketball court that is directly across the street from it, the commissioners made a motion, approved a motion to restore the lot as a playground. Plan was developed with playground equipment. It was presented to the joint meeting of the city council and the Park and Recreation Commission in September. Council members spoke in favor of the playground concept, but asked staff to develop a lower-cost option. A scaled-back plan was approved by the commission in October, and that plan includes surfacing, equipment installation, signage, bench, trash receptacle, and the surfacing of this basketball court. The plan that was presented to the commission is in keeping with our other playgrounds at some of the other pocket parks. And here at Seventh and Walnut, you can see the one piece of equipment with the single swing set. Here at Fleetwood, same thing. This would be similar to what would be considered at Catalpa with a single piece of equipment and the swing set. And lastly, at Herman Park, with a single piece of equipment and the swing set. Staff's recommendation is to support the commission's recommendation, to rebuild the lot as a playground, and to place the item in the 2010-2011 CIP budget. And there are members of both the commission and the public who spoke at the commission meetings. They're both here in our audience tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff?
Through the chair.
I'm sorry.
At the study session, you did provide a preliminary plan of the, is that still very similar, or is that the plan that you're going to use because of the... We would be presenting this plan here, this is, it would be the single piece of equipment with the swing set. The other piece, the other proposal that we presented at the joint meeting, had a couple more pieces of apparatus that were included. This is more in keeping with the cost considerations that council made at that meeting. Generally, the same layout without the additional pieces? Correct. It would still be on both sides of the gas line, which is... Because of the gas. Is a restriction.
And so the recommendation, if I understand it correctly, is to bring back the tot lot and the resurfacing of the basketball courts in the 2010-11 capital improvement budget.
Through the chair. You talked about a trash receptacle. Were we also going to be having a recycling receptacle as well?
It is, it would be joint, yes.
Okay. And then, because you're talking about, basically around fifty thousand dollars for both, which seems, you know, not unreasonable, what is the cost for the equipment versus the paving? What's the differential?
The cost for the equipment is about twenty-three thousand dollars. The cost of the paving was around twelve thousand dollars. The rest of the costs include the curbing that would go around the playground, the surfacing, which would be the fi-bar type material. So that would handle the rest of the costs. The total cost of the project would be roughly forty-seven thousand dollars. We would be coming back with roughly a fifty thousand dollar budget for the entire project.
And twenty-three thousand for all the equipment?
For that piece of equipment, yes.
That would be more expensive for some reason.
This has been going on...
Hold on.
This has been going on for so long. We spend, we're going to spend seventy-eight thousand dollars on a truck faster than we're going to build a park for fifty thousand. Why can't we just get a design and move forward? I mean, if you put it in the 2010-2011 capital improvement budget, you're now not going to have it in the budget until next June, so nothing's going to happen for the first half of the year. Then we probably need a half a year to start planning, then we'll probably have a couple more meetings, a couple more hearings, and next thing you know, we're going to decide the money's not there, and we're going to move on to something else and it'll sit there. I mean, there's, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but fifty thousand dollars isn't a lot of money when you're looking at recreation, when there hasn't been any recreation there for, like you said, two years ago, we took the equipment down?
Five years ago.
Five years ago, okay? I think it's time to act. I mean, I would recommend that we move forward. I think the neighborhood has certainly had an opportunity to speak on what they want there, and if they want something there, I think it's time to do it. I mean, there's recreation funds or money that's been put up by developers, not specifically for playground equipment, but for recreation and expanded use, and it's not like you're taking a half million dollars of that fund to spend it. I mean, you're talking fifty, and maybe you'll wind up, if you're talking fifty, you're probably going to wind up at seventy-five, but I mean, you're still in a relatively small amount of money, and that's just my opinion.
I agree. Franzella's tot lot, recall.
Through the chair. Through the chair. We might entertain listening to the people who came to speak.
Right, right.
First of all, my name is Kathleen Jordan. I live on Toyon Way. I have watched Catalpa Park disappear slowly in these booklets, okay? Because I would call and say, oh, Catalpa Tot Land says there's playground equipment, but there isn't. And I'd be told, oh, we're working on it. And then the next book came out, and the playground equipment was gone, but there was a bend, sure, there was... Eventually, there is no Catalpa Tot Land, nothing in your booklets for the last three, four books. But there is a basketball court there, and it is used pretty much on a daily basis. So when you're saying that this hasn't been used in a couple of years, yes, it has. And the empty lot that's there is, at present, being used as a dog park. I went by there today, and I took pictures, and I can show them to you, they're on my camera, of dog waste, of weed, probably two, three feet high. But across the street at the police records building, that property is kept perfectly. It's mowed, it's not being maintained. As a resident of Rollingwood, I'm disappointed in the way that this has been handled over the last few years. We depend on you people to keep our neighborhoods up to family-oriented so that we can enjoy these parks. We shouldn't have to come here and fight to have a park in our neighborhood. We shouldn't have to come here to fight to have it maintained and kept tidy. I strongly urge you to give this neighborhood back its park in a timely manner. We have waited long enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
My name is Lloyd Chaney. I live at twenty-six-ten Fleetwood. Used to be, when I was younger, I could probably throw a rock over to that playground. Now it's, I think it's a little farther away from where I live. As I get older, you lose. But anyhow, my kids grew up playing in that park, my grandkids, when they come up to visit, they used to play in the park. I've listened to all your major problems and millions and millions of dollars a day for an hour and a half, and I don't see why in the world you just can't spend the money, take this little park, get it fixed, and get it off your agenda. I thank you.
Thank you.
I also, thank you, Larry. That's the first time I've ever heard anyone say, you know what, we should have a few dollars in the San Bruno budget, seventy-five thousand dollars to do a little park. We've been waiting for years. It's an absolute disgrace. We got dogs running all over the place, and like my wife said, we can't even get the weeds mowed. We went to Park and Rec meetings, or the, they were, not commission meetings, what were they called? Anyway, whatever they were.
Commission.
Commission meetings, yeah. They promised us that they would keep the weeds down. It hasn't happened. I mean, take a drive-by tomorrow, you'll see it. It's so simple. We're not that hard to keep happy, but we've waited long enough, we'd like our park back. Please spend a few dollars. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Councilmember Medina.
I would say I've heard from a couple other folks in regards to the weeds in the lot as well, that the facility across the street is maintained, but if they're right there, why can't they go across the street and maintain that lot that the city owns? Again, the city needs to lead by example with its properties if we're going to ask residents to do the same. So I would hope that we can obviously maybe look into that tomorrow and ensure the residents that it can be taken care of at the same time when we're maintaining across the street and we're already in the vicinity. I would agree too. I think the, I know this goes back, I might have even been on the Park and Rec Commission when the apparatus was taken out because of the concerns, and then it was not put in the phase, I believe, two, and now it's been brought back up. That's why I'm impressed and kind of shocked that it's just fifty thousand, to be honest with you, for what it entails. And I think the lot across the street, as far as basketball's concerned, has not been paved in decades. And nowadays, people need places to go. The neighbors, obviously, are something that they want to see, and I would agree, whether you call it Larry Lot or Franzella Lot or whatever, that I'm in for...
Something bigger.
Something bigger, okay. We'll save it. But I'm in favor of also moving forward and not having this wait for the budget process and what would be another year in waiting potentially.
I'd like to also just echo that we take a lesson from the Park and Rec Commission, because they went through a good process, and they heard from the, you know, from the neighborhood, and they could have gone on longer in discussing this, and the commission decided, let's move forward and make our recommendation and go to the council and let them delay it. And I think, and I think we almost, I think we almost did that, but I think we should keep the momentum going and give the park back.
Okay. With that said, I'll make a motion that staff bring back the plan for the council to approve, accepting the commission's recommendation that the council can approve, and then you can go out to bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So hopefully, before June...
Get those weeds.
Okay. Item E, receive a report and provide direction to staff regarding proposed municipal code revisions to implement the residential design guidelines. Mr. Ackman, welcome back.
I'm back. Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As the council knows, two weeks ago, there was a... As the council knows, two weeks ago, there was a joint study session of both the City Council and the Planning Commission to review the residential design guidelines. And as you can see, Laura Russell, our associate planner, who I did, heard did an excellent job two weeks ago, is here just in case there's any questions that come up that relate to the meeting two weeks ago. But at that meeting, there's primarily feedback given to the document themselves. And along with the document, we also have a few policy points and code changes that we're proposing to both make the document more effective and consistent with the municipal code. There are three different areas. The first has to do with a consistency finding. And many people do not know, but currently, within the city of San Bruno, a majority of additions do not go through architectural review. The only reason they go through architectural review is if they exceed certain thresholds. If not, it's a non-discretionary process. It goes straight through a building permit, straight to a building permit. And although the planners do a good job of recommending changes to the, to the homeowners to make the home look better, there's nothing in what the code, within the code that requires those architectural changes to be made. And that was actually one of the first recommendations of the subcommittee, was that these residential design guidelines should apply to all additions that affect the exterior of a building. So it would not impact something if you're just doing a kitchen remodel inside your home. But if you're doing a porch extension and doing a bump out, then yes, these architectural changes would have to be made. And how that would be accomplished, the code would be amended to state that any exterior change that requires a building permit would, the community development director would have to make the finding for approval that the, the design is consistent with the basic design principles found within the residential design guidelines. And I believe those are on page eight of the residential design guidelines. And what they are is a summary of the intent of the residential design guidelines. And it's a good medium between the two in that there, you still have the teeth that the residential design guidelines can accomplish, while at the same time allowing flexibility to homeowners, that they don't have to meet every single point of the residential design guidelines, but they still have to meet the overall intent of the document. The second part of this area is that these, the same finding for approval would have to be made by the Planning Commission for all discretionary permits. Currently, the Planning Commission has to make five to 10, depending on the, the type of permit, findings for approval. And this would be another one, that the project is consistent with the basic design principles found within the code. The second, or found within the residential design guidelines. The second area that we would like to look at is parking requirements for small homes. Currently, if you build any home, regardless of the size, and regardless of the size of lot that it's on, you're required to put a two-car garage on it. Now, this complicates issues because we have many 25-foot wide lots and substandard lot. And the definition of a substandard lot is anything less than 5,000 square feet. We have many substandard lots in San Bruno where if you put a two-car garage on it, it makes for a really ugly design because you either have a two-car wide garage that takes up the entire width of the lot, or you have to put in a tandem garage that ends up making an awkward first-floor plan. It's basically unusable, maybe a family room in back and all the living area upstairs. What is unique is that it's actually inconsistent with our requirement for existing homes. Currently, our requirement for existing homes is if you currently have a one-car garage and you don't exceed that 1,825-foot wide lot, 25-foot floor area plan, you don't have to put a second-car garage. So what we're recommending here is that the two remain consistent and that if you are building a new home on a substandard lot and you keep it under that 1,825-square-foot mark, you only have to put a one-car garage in, in addition to your one-car driveway. And I think this will have two direct effects. A, it will make for better design, and B, it also will encourage smaller homes that are more compatible with existing neighborhoods. The third area, policy area, has to do with front yard paving and landscaping. And although it is always the community expectation that no one concrete over their whole front yard, there's nothing within the code that, that details that expectation. And to achieve this, staff has identified three different options within the, within the staff reporting and presenting to the City Council tonight, how we can meet that objective. Little bit of background, currently, the municipal code requires that at least no more than 80% of your lot is impervious surface. So there has to be at least 20% pervious surface on your lot, which impervious surface allows rainwater to drip through to the ground and not end up in our stormwater system. We also have a 15% landscaping requirement. But what our code does not point out is where that landscaping and where that pervious surface has to be. So someone, if they have a large backyard, a large side yard, can make for their whole landscaping requirement within their side yard and backyard and then pave over the front yard. So with that in mind, we're proposing three different options. The first, which is the staff recommended option, is that we amend the impervious surface requirement to specify that front yards cannot be entirely paved over and apply that new requirement to all properties within the city. We have not gone, the, the residential design guidelines specify a certain amount, and we would make that a consistent amount so that someone could not pave over their whole entire front yard. But what we would use is the term impervious surface. And that would allow different pavers to be used, not necessarily living plant material, but it would require something that allows rainwater to go into the ground and also allows some type of aesthetic issues to be addressed. The second point and the second option would be amend the code to require that primarily, primarily living plant material be found within the front yard at the same percentage. So this would not allow for pervious pavers to be, help meet that percentage and would require that it be all living plant materials. And the third option is kind of the leave it alone option in that we do not specify it within the municipal code. We just let it go and we just have it within the residential design guideline document, and it wouldn't be replicated within the municipal code. So those are the three areas of policy that we'd like to review with you tonight. We're going to be giving the same presentation to the Planning Commission next Tuesday to also get their feedback and then ultimately bring it up to the Planning Commission and the City Council for review. So I could take any questions at this time, and Laura's also here.
Questions or comments?
Real quick question. When we're talking about the frontage and if we have substandard setback issues, what, what would you propose to do in that situation, in those situations?
I think that, that's a good question because just for the public's knowledge, a standard setback within San Bruno is 15 feet for the front yard. And when you have 15 feet to work with, there are a lot of different landscaping, impervious surface material options that you could, you could work with. But I think you're making a good point that when you get some of these San Francisco-style homes that maybe have a three-foot setback or five-foot setback, you don't have that much room to work with. And you, you know, you want a part of your area to, to walk in there to get to your home. And there might be, you know, there might be other issues there too. So what I would say is we incorporate something within the code that allows community development director discretion with substandard lots or Planning Commission discretion, depending on who the approving authority is.
Through the chair. On the same subject, I'd like a little more elaboration on trees. I know with a lot of the projects that go through use permit process, many of the projects are required to provide a new tree. And it's not really stated where it should be. It's just stated that there's an in-loof fee or that you, you know, provide a tree. I think that we should have more direction as to where we want the tree. And other than just plant, you know, calling out landscaping, calling plantings, I think we should specifically, you know, you know, put something in there that addresses trees in the front yard.
Would you like to see that within the municipal code? Or would you like to see that more within the?
The design guidelines.
It is in the design, okay.
Irene?
Thank you. Erin, on your number one recommendation with the impervious surfaces, it says impervious here, but you made some comment about pervious surfaces, the concrete and the pavers that allow rain. I, I'm sorry, I got a little confused about what it is you're recommending and what you're adding and.
It's my understanding, and Laura could correct me if I'm wrong, this recommendation would be that you have to have a certain amount of pervious surface within your front yard. And it doesn't necessarily, I think I used the word incorrectly, it doesn't necessarily have to be living plant material, but it has to be something that allow water to drain to the ground rather than taking it to our stormwater system.
Right, exactly. When we do things, when you look at how that might work out, I strongly think that there should be some kind of living, even if it's a tree or a, you know, some kind of greenery, even though the surfaces may be pervious and allow rainwater, there should be something green in front. On an aside issue, why I have you, when we're going through, when you go through the guidelines, is there any method that anyone looking through this is going to be able to tell at a glance what is required and what is recommended? Is there any plans to say, I'd code it somehow, color-code it, or put a symbol next to it or something? Because looking, you'd have to read every word almost to find out what exactly is required and what's just strongly recommended.
Actually, I think that's a great idea. I think that's something that, if the council would all agree, that we could incorporate some type of legend or some type of summary sheet that at least goes over the requirements of the, the city code and then also shows that these are other design characteristics that you could implement in order to meet the basic design principles within the, within the design guidelines.
Just on that item, I think it's real important. I think that's a valid point. The only thing I would hate to see happen is that something color-coded where someone then, looking at it, says, oh, only the blue items are what I have to do, so I don't even have to read the, the other items or give them consideration. So I think you need to maybe do some type of legends.
So, yeah, something.
Yeah, so it's clear to the person doing it, but you don't want to just have it laid out that these are required and these aren't.
Maybe even italics. I don't know. Somebody must have done it somewhere. But, but some kind of consideration that way. And then also on this, and these have been percolating through my mind, with the, the sustainability that you have in here in the guidelines, which I think are great, can we also think of some kind of carrot to go with this? We often think of penalties and fines if people don't do things. But maybe there is some kind of, you get 10% off your planning fee, permit fee, if you include so much sustainable planting or some, some kind of something. I'm sure somebody's figured out something or you guys can be creative and do it. But I'd love us to have a little more carrots instead of just sticks and all this. That's all I have for this minute. I'll find some more.
Alms Barne, Fifth Avenue. I apologize, I stepped out and I did not hear the beginning of your presentation. But I have seen people flat out take up the grass and put down the concrete for years, and I've thought of that same problem. Is there any possibility to put together a packet with some of this information and, hey, you want a new water heater, you need a permit, and get it to every new home buyer in the community when they purchase a home? Because, you know, I bought mine in 1990 and I, I don't remember anything, you know? Maybe you could put, think of that. Thank you.
Good point. Any other comments from council?
No, not me.
Okay. One-car garage, I think that's the only thing we didn't touch. Any concerns on that?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Anything, direction that you need that you haven't gotten?
I guess in, for the third option, in terms of the front yard, is there any preferred option that you have? Is it, I, I think I heard from, I think I heard that you would like to see the, there be options given, but there at least be some living plant material within the front yard? Okay. I think I would word it that way.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, your first, your first recommendations is the one to work with.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Ken?
It's been, it's been my experience that is the key, the key to this and the key to it being successful throughout the community is that we, we give, we give the customer, we give the, the property owner the information, not necessarily all at once, but give them the information that, you know, that there is, you know, a, a lot of guidelines here that need to be followed and then help them through it. And then also the fact that it gets followed up and that it gets enforced.
Yeah.
Because then, yours truly and the, we'll make it very clear to these homeowners, along with the contractors, means that, no, they don't have the free rein to do whatever they want. They don't have the free rein to just pull up their, their landscaping and pave it over, that there is a new guideline in town and that we're going to enforce it. Thanks for all the work. It's great.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Item F, adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2010 Ford F-550 regular cab truck with a utility body from Town Ford in an amount of $78,977 for water operations. Howard?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. I'm here tonight to recommend the purchase of a new service truck for our water division. The vehicle we are replacing is a 1999 Isuzu cabin chassis with utility body. This vehicle is used five days a week and for after-hours emergency repairs, performing such tasks as repairing the water mains, repair and replacement of water services, meter, water meter installs and replacements, fire hydrant repair and replacements. At the time this vehicle was purchased, most of our large jobs were performed by outside contractors. At this time, over 70% of our jobs are performed by staff. Therefore, the size of this vehicle is not suited for today's daily operation. The new vehicle will have a larger gross vehicle weight and be able to carry all the tools and supply that the staff now utilizes. This truck will have a tamper holder located on the front bumper, which will drop down to ground level for easy access and make it easier on our employees' backs and prevent some of the injuries we see. It would also have a built-in compressor and jackhammer to replace the tow behind unit that we use now. The cost of this unit, this unit falls within the capital improvement program budget of $90,000. I appreciate your time and I will answer any questions.
Any questions or action from council?
Through the chair. Councilmember Medina? Mr. Lynn, I want to receive some information. I appreciate the follow-up. I wanted to know how much this was being utilized, how many days it had been down this year, what the cost was for the maintenance for the year to this vehicle. And obviously, I'm being told that it was out for 23 days due to maintenance repairs this year alone. It is a vehicle that is utilized for emergencies and must be maintained and ready. And with the new apparatus that it brings, it seems that it's a warranted purchase. Is there any?
Any other questions, action from council?
I'll make a motion, adopt the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Mayor Franzella?
Aye.
Item G, receive oral report on the status of the public emergency at the 1,200 block of Montgomery Avenue and confirm the continuation of the public emergency.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as I've reported to you at two previous City Council meetings, there has been, since one month ago at your October 13th meeting, a repair situation going on to the sanitary sewer line and associated laterals in the vicinity of 1,290 Montgomery. That situation is continuing, although it is rapidly moving towards completion. And as I previously reported to you, there is, there, there was initially uncertainty and consideration about whether, in addition to the main line repairs that were visibly indicated on a televised, televising surveillance of the line once leakage was identified, that there may also be indicated repairs or necessary repairs to the associated laterals. That has, during the course of the repair construction, been identified as being the case. And that lateral repair work is that which is, is now proceeding and which is, while being completed at a good pace, not yet finally completed. I previously advised you of the cost of the project, being in the $140,000 range, that, that cost remains viable. And I expect that you can see that I will be reporting to you at your November 24th meeting, conclusion of this emergency situation. And, and hopefully, that will be a satisfactory conclusion as it relates at least to this repair. Staff further advises me upon my specific questioning that while there has been an observed significant slowing of the leakage into the underground vault, which precipitated our concern about necessary repairs, that whether this particular our concern about necessary repairs, that whether this particular repair is fully the cause and therefore fully resolves that leakage situation cannot be fully and completely known until these repairs are complete. So I look forward also to being able to advise you of the actual conclusion of a situation that is obviously of concern and interest to the city, when I report to you the completion of this repair and the associated emergency circumstances under which it was undertaken. As we discussed at the last City Council meeting, your action by four-fifths vote of the City Council is requested in continuation of this emergency, and then, as I indicated, we'll be back to you at the next regular council meeting.
Thank you. We need, we need a vote on that.
Requesting your action.
Okay. We need a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item H, long-awaited item, adopt resolution approving side letter agreement between the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno Police Bargaining Unit, extending the existent, existing memorandum of understanding and authorizing its execution by the city manager. Any questions from staff or action from council?
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce a resolution for adoption.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Franzella?
Aye.
Item eleven, reports the commission boards and committees, there are none. Item twelve, comments from council members, we have none. Item thirteen, the City Council will be going into a closed session to provide direction to legal counsel regarding potential litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section From there, we'll adjourn to the meeting to be held on November twenty-fourth at seven o'clock PM here at the San Bruno Senior Center, and we'd like to adjourn this evening's meeting with a moment of silence in memory of men and women who lost their lives at Fort Hood, and also a longtime member and active volunteer here at the Senior Center, Tom Rogowski, who both he and his wife of sixty years, Terry, were very active at the center, and if we could just have a moment of silence. Thank you. The City Council now going to closed session.